Good evening. I'm going to call the Concord School Committee to order. We are doing things a little backwards tonight. We're going to start with Concord and then do the facility study overview and then we will be joined by our regional representatives.
Anderson present.
Oh, we have to roll call it. Thank you.
Anderson present.
Project present.
Randy present.
No, Marano present.
Rankin present.
Somebody's got their sound on.
Great. So we are all here. Andrew is remote, so we will be. You're good?
You could probably just mute it or turn your volume all the way down.
He's coming up to present in a moment, so he's trying to be ready for you.
Okay. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, so tonight you're going to hear a very high level overview of a lot of information. And by design, we thought this was the first pass to just acclimate ourselves. And I'm going to include us because we're pretty new to it as well. We've had a little heads up before you, but not a lot. So I think our hope tonight is to really talk building by building, K5 and Ripley, and just sort of hear the first level of what the team found during the work of the feasibility study. It will be the precursor to the capital plan that we build, but I think that's going to take a number of phases to get to. You're going to hear dollar amounts, which I don't think we want to spend a lot of time on tonight. We're not trying to make decisions. We're not trying to decide what the priorities are. We're just trying to get the big picture. So I'm going to turn over to Bob. He's been working closely with the team and ask you to write them.
So George O'Neill from Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects is going to do a presentation tonight. He'll talk about the process they used, which subcontractors they had involved. And these are their findings and recommendations. We certainly are going to take a look at it and make decisions about what we think are priorities on this and consult more with them. This is, like Lori said, the first step. There may be some things that we see on there that we think are higher priority than are listed and things that we don't necessarily think are priorities that are in the report. And we do have kind of very granular reports that go with this. There's four 100-page reports with pictures, and so there's a lot to digest. So again, that's kind of where we are now is we haven't read every detail of the 400-page reports yet. But I thought I'd start off with introducing George and having him kind of walk us through his presentation.
Come on up.
Come on up. You're good.
Yeah, this is perfect.
We also have some subcontractors on that, you know, in the event there's questions.
Just pull that down.
Sure.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is George O'Neill. I'm an architect with Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects out of Hockington and sort of represent a larger team of people who performed the assessment for us. We worked with our structural engineer, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, civil engineer, and the environmental hazmat engineer as well. In our own office as architects, we took a look at the interior and we also have a building envelope group in our office who basically takes a look at the building envelope, the exterior of the building. So what I'd like to do, if I could, I can share my screen for one if I may, so that I can show you what's going on here. See if this is. Trying to get this little guy going. Does that?
That's fine. I can't read the text. What does it say?
George has started screen sharing.
There we go. Just a terrific. Excellent. Good deal. So we, again, what our team did, the intent, and I can actually sort of cheat sheet, these are the four schools, of course, that we looked at, the Alcott, the Thoreau, and Walcott, and Walcott, I'm sorry, Willard, and of course, where we are now, the integrated preschool in Ripley, where we are today. So just a little basic data, I think you're aware of it. The three of the schools are fairly recent, 2004 to 2009, and then, of course, the one we're in now, dating back to 1957. That's the pods, as you probably know. The preschool dates back to '57, the administration building that we're in now to '68. But basically, the approach we're taking, again, we're looking at these six elements, really the site elements, where our civil engineer are looking at the outside, the condition of your pavement, walkways, et cetera, the landscaping. Then we went inside, the architectural element, so we're looking at the condition of the space, both the finishes as well as any code issues, especially handicap accessibility codes. And so we observed that and noted that. I mentioned the building envelope elements, the roof, exterior walls, the doors and the windows. The structural components, our structural engineer looked at it. There frankly was no egregious structural concern, especially in the newer buildings. We do highlight some cracks and things, especially in the older building here in Ripley that was not uncommon or unexpected. We grouped the whole together, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, and fire protection. Those are typically, you know, it's one firm with multiple disciplines, so they were looking at the boilers, the electrical system, the plumbing fixtures and plumbing systems, as well as the fire protection system, which would be the sprinkler system primarily on that. And then finally, the hazmat, the environmental, for just taking a look and trying to get a sense of, as we always do with hazards materials such as asbestos, lead-based paint type of thing. So what we did is, just to give you a quick background, is that we all descended upon your schools here at multiple times and just sort of started walking around and closely looking at it. We've done a lot of these assessments and we realized what we're trying to do is sort of gather, first of all, just a clear observation of the condition of things. Because of the nature of what we do, we know what we're looking at and what we're looking for. And so we're able to comment on the conditions of things, whether they're still serviceable, good condition, poor condition, et cetera. And then we make some recommendations on each of those comments. So that was the primary sort of infield work that we did. And then from there, we basically digested that. We sort of put it into a format which is readable and digestible and so that it's not just a bucket load of information that gets dumped on you. So that's what this is. What I'm doing tonight really is just a very brief summary of the final reports, which is what these are here. They've got a lot of pictures, so that's good. Makes it a little more easy to digest. So what I'd like to do this evening is really, for where we are, is to walk you through sort of the highlights, you know, for each one, to give you a sense of what we found and saw and going forward. Let's do this. So in broad terms, we had broken out the approach to look at it, you know, immediate issues, zero to 11 months, then one to five years out, and finally, six to 10 years out. That was sort of the window that we were looking at when we were looking at the items. And when should we think these should be addressed? You'll see these for each building. There are some larger numbers, especially in the one to five year, because most of that basically is that when it comes, for example, to mechanical systems, you know, they're approaching that magic 20-year mark. And that's when you start to look at it, start to say, well, a lot of the things such as boilers or other HVAC equipment are nearing their end of their useful life. So it's just a heads up, hey, we've got to see how these are operating. And it's a balance. It doesn't necessarily mean one thing totally fails suddenly. It might mean that Jesus, it's costing more to fix it than it is to finally replace it. So there's sort of those kinds of decisions that get made as you go along. Oops, sorry, I had that twice. So I'd like to start, if I could, with Alcott. And I think it just takes a minute for the system to catch up. I don't know if you're looking at the Alcott. I'm looking at what I'm seeing up there. It's a little different than what I'm seeing.
I think it's a little delayed.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It just takes a second. But yeah, so here we are. So with Alcott, so for each one, just to give you, you're going to quickly see the setup of the outline. We're going to tackle civil first, then architecture, and then go on through that for each one. So as a little heads up is that Alcott, Thoreau, and even Willard, because of their relative, one, they're relatively young, two, they're well-maintained. So you're going to see a lot of repetitive kinds of comments because basically that's what we saw, you know, on that. So to start with, in Alcott, on the civil site issues, eventually, we're looking at the condition of eventually needing to replace the asphalt pavement. When you look at the cost matrix, you're going to see that that's really more on the one to five year route. There's nothing critical or imminent required of that. We noted some granite curbs and sidewalks that were damaged. Tactile warning panels, these are simply the little button panels in the sidewalks, especially for handicap accessibility. So just so you know, those are often seen. When it comes to stormwater drainage and sewer piping, the first order of business really is to, you know, get a camera down there, take a good look, see what the condition of the system is. If low grade, either it might call for cleaning, or in some cases, if there's a broken structure of some nature, it would be tagged for replacement. So that's, again, more in that one to five range. But that's really, at least in Alcott, there was one broken cover that was obvious in the underground utility enclosure. That was a little one-off that we noted. But in broad terms, these are the elements on the site that you'll see, what you want to be addressing as the years go on. On the architecture, let me just move my little piece of that. Again, this is the interior. You're in good condition. The Alcott school is well-maintained, is in good condition. However, sure enough, you know, one to five years out, you're getting into 20-plus, 25-year-old finishes. And there are certain things that are wear and tear. Carpet, for example. Wood flooring, you know, in the gymnasium or in the auditorium, probably at that point would need refinishing. So that's what we call, we talk about there. Millwork, by millwork, I'm talking about cabinetry, you know, especially the countertops. The plastic laminate gets very worn, and when you replace a countertop, you typically replace the sink that's with the countertop. So you're going to see some of those things noted at the same time. So these are really sort of common things that are, just because, again, they're nearing the end of their useful life, you're going to start noticing, hey, it's probably time to consider replacing some of these items. Again, these are the high-wear items. Those high-wear items also include door hardware, especially hardware like that. You have the panic bar, you know, when you get a lot of use, sooner or later, things get out of whack and, you know, they're going to be looking at some potential replacement for that. So it's not necessarily wholesale, every piece of hardware, you know, gets replaced. But there are certain doors, especially the high-use doors, egress doors in particular, would probably need new weather stripping, potentially new hardware itself, just to make them operate properly. And then heavy use of kitchen equipment. You have, you know, commercial-grade kitchens here, again, not talking about a wholesale, get everything out, bring it over and new. But there are some high-use fixtures and appliances that probably would get to the end of their service life and either could benefit from a real overhaul or a replacement. So that's what that aspect is. Let this just catch up. And if any questions obviously come up in the interim, please let me know. So the next one we're moving into is the building envelope. Again, with the newer buildings, the things that take the biggest hit are the roofing systems, sealants, you know, caulk joints, things like that. So in the case of both Alcott and Thoreau, they have both types of roofs. They have the pitched shingle roof, and then they have, they call it low slope, but it means flat membrane roof, the black EPDM rubber. Obviously, they take a lot of wear and tear. So again, because of the age, you know, there's been a lot of repairs going on, which is natural, patching, et cetera. But at some point, it gets to a point where it really needs to be looked at as the whole roof system. And I know Bob and Russ Hughes are looking at options there. And there are options, you know, anything from replacing the entire rubber roof with a new one, to if the insulation under the roof is dry, there are other options, such as coating the roof and things like that. So there's a lot of, you know, the industry is pretty sophisticated and has some very good systems to give owners some options. So the asphalt roofing shingle too, the asphalt roofs themselves, they just start to lose their granularity, which means they start to wear down, and, you know, some leaks can occur from that. So both these, as well as the sealants, sealants have a limited life, and they're important because they keep the water out and out of every joint that you have, and there's always a lot of joints. So these are the bigger ticket items. They typically, not always, you'll see in the matrix or the cost summary, where this would lie very often, I think with Alcott in particular, you know, that, again, one to five-year range, where at that point where the roof is of an age, you want to take a look at it. Structural, we hadn't much to say, although it was good condition. You know what I mean? There was nothing egregious that was noticeable, and we didn't really expect anything because, you know, the nature and, not the nature, but the age of the building and, you know, the sophistication of it. Regarding mechanical systems, that's, again, when you get into the age of the units, the boilers, you see a lot of anacronyms, ERVs and AHUs and all that, but it's basically just, you know, something, it's either moving air or, you know, making it hot or cool. And in different parts of the building, some are on the roof, some are inside the space, but whatever the case, when they start, again, beyond that 20-year mark, it's usually time to say, you know, it's going to get close to, be prudent to replace them. Especially the outdoor equipment. Outdoor is typically rooftop that's exposed to the elements. The electrical system, not too much to say. Mostly, the big-ticket item that comes in on that is down the road. If fluorescent is still sort of the, you know, primary lighting system as it was when it was built, the building, you know, the LED technology, you know, which is cost savings, there are very often, you know, incentives to change those out. So the idea, when I say lighting replacement, lighting control replacement, we're talking about that idea, that, hey, it might be time to look at upgrading the lighting system of the buildings. And the lighting controls go with that just because that's how you get the most energy efficiency and use out of it, so lights aren't on when you don't want them to be, et cetera, and that you can control those. Plumbing fixtures, again, not a whole lot, except for when it comes, not so much fixtures like toilets and sinks, as water heaters, pumps, et cetera, the things that are heavy duty and they work. They work hard, they start to break down. So those are the things in that category. Fire protection, again, these three buildings, because of their age, are all sprinkled, you know, unlike this, because this is an older facility. But, you know, mostly, it'll come to a point where there'll be certainly some testing. We found some little one-offs where a room that didn't have a sprinkle head, et cetera. But it might be, you know, long-term, is it inspection, inspecting and testing, which is really just good practice as you go along. But there isn't expected any major change in the fire protection system. And then lastly, hazmat, which is, you know, basically, you know, the newer buildings have very little asbestos in them, if any. They shouldn't have any. But it's just sort of a wherewithal. This is a basic requirement that no matter how old the building is, could be brand-new. But if you get into a project where you're going to, say, you're going to rearrange some rooms and you have to demolish something. When you're a school or a commercial building, the regulations say you got to test, and that simply means you take a little piece, you send it out to the lab. We would expect it to say nothing, and you're fine. If not, that means that component just needs to be handled appropriately. So that's what's going on there. So in a nutshell, that's Alcott. I don't know if you have any questions or things like that.
Do we want to go through all of them or take a pod and ask about specific buildings?
Sure.
Just keep going?
Yeah, I think maybe the things that are in good condition, you can just comment, and we can skip those.
Sure, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do this quickly then, because Thoreau is almost a carbon copy of Alcott because same condition, same age, et cetera. There was nothing that really stood out differently. Frankly, you'll see a lot of the same things in there. Frankly, the same with Willard. Different style of building, different architect, very nice building. But the same thing. Some minor things, there's a little bit of erosion control in the outside at the playground that everybody's aware of. But all the other things pretty much are the same because it's just coming up to end of life. Same with the building envelope and the mechanical system as well. So not to be too quick about it, but frankly, that's sort of where we're at, and you can read it, you can read it all.
And then there's Ripley.
And then there's Ripley. Ripley. Well, Ripley, we did see more, just because it's an older building. There are two buildings, really, the '57 school, which includes the build-out of the '57 era, included the boiler room, what is now the gym and what is now the steam lab. So that was all part of that original. The steam lab was renovated in '17, I think, and is in good order. So in terms of the site, it mimics pretty much the others because, you know, it's the same kind of elements primarily. In terms of the architecture, it's just the nature of the buildings. You know, they're older, the design, the layout, you know, the individual pods, there's certainly, you know, opportunities to renovate and improve them. They're serviceable, people are using them. I think that it really would probably be, you know, how the town wants to move forward with them, you know, and deal with that. There are, I think, like anything, you know, there's also HVAC upgrades, you know, new boilers and things like that. But when you get to an older building, buildings like these, unless it's immediately needed, before you do the HVAC upgrades, you want to look at the envelope because you want to keep the heat in that you're making. So, you know, you're looking at the roofing, the window systems and things like that. So, you know, in terms of that, there was a lot to talk about here because of, you know, how the, they're really two buildings and how they're broken apart. The newer administration building, you know, clearly, you know, is more about maybe added comfort or efficiencies and things like that. And then the pods were just more, you know, they are serviceable, but they could certainly use some consideration. So that's a real bright comment on Ripley and be happy to talk if you wanted a little bit more information about those.
That's a lot of really great information. Obviously, there's a ton in here, a ton of detail, and it's really helpful to understand. We've been really talking about this study for a long time, so it's great to see it kind of come together. So thank you for all of your work. Does anybody have kind of questions? I have a couple, but open it up for you guys first. I think this is kind of like, to Lori's point, this is a first, a lot to absorb, and I'm sure we're going to be talking about this for a long time and figuring out how to prioritize. But any kind of, any questions are welcome, yeah.
So I just had a question about the systems in the Ripley building, particularly HVAC. The town where I work, they really had to rebuild their elementary school because they had an old wing and it had all the HVAC in it. And so they were just caught. They either had to tear that down and rebuild it or start over. So I just wondered what was contained in the '57 part of the structure, where is the HVAC is?
Sure, right. And the pods, the structure, if you go in, the little entries, you have a little mechanical closet straight ahead, and then you have the two little bathrooms and the two. These, they appear to be pretty self-contained in that sense. Each pod has that little heating plant, you know, right between the two bathrooms. The larger boiler room down the hall here, which probably services the adjacent, the steam lab, the gymnasium, which, you know, the steam had been the cafeteria, I believe, the gymnasium, and then the print room, the art room, you know, feeding primarily those components. And that is one of the things, is that it's all separate. There are all these bits and pieces which, you know, in a comprehensive approach, might be say, hey, how can we either centralize it, you know, or make it a lot more efficient?
Sure. And then there's all kinds of approaches to air conditioning, it sounds like.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's an understatement. So this kind of goes to my larger question, and this wasn't, I'm not saying that should have been part of this study, is that there's lots of other financial capital cost questions that I don't think are included in all these numbers that we need to do further investigation on because it's just a matter of how we do it, what approach, how we do it, if it's net zero, if it's not, if it's whatever. I mean, there's just a lot of...
Yeah, and we purposely gave direction not to include all of that because we wanted the baseline numbers, knowing everything you just said is true, that if we were to bring in a higher, a more sustainable option, it would have its own costs associated. So we wanted...
Hold my next step.
Yeah, we wanted to disaggregate that, assuming it was going to be part of the discussion as we made decisions.
There's a couple points to add to that too, which is, so the typical process is to do replacement cost and, you know, cost inflated, pace depend on when it is. The other thing is, some of these things, if they're more involved, will have some design engineering costs, like a lot of these won't, but some of the big ones, like if we had to replace a roof, we'd probably need to get a design engineer. So there's some costs that we potentially add to it. There's also some costs that we might not have to pay for, like some of these might be able to be funded by a green community grant. The roofs are probably too new to get funded by MSBA. I think they have to be 30 years. I can check on that. But like, if we try to drag that out, maybe we can get some MSBA funding for it. So there's, like, this doesn't mean we have to pay for all this. These numbers can change, but they give us a roadmap for what things we know we need to replace and when, and then the cost might change.
That's interesting. So, you know, what I noted was the first year was about 1.3 million, which is about $400,000 more than we typically spend in capital. However, we did just pull two years back by about a million bucks, so that didn't make me lose my mind, where I start to, you know, lose my mind.
Just remember, anything under X dollars, it has to be in our budget.
Sure. But, you know, and then when I look at, you know, the other, the remaining, you know, the first 10 years, you know, even at 28 million, if you sort of look at it over 10 years, that's still sort of three times what we typically spend annually. So, you know, wondering, wondering sort of when, from your perspective, when do we start looking and planning for that? Do you typically recommend looking out that full 10 years and trying to piece together a plan that, you get to your point, some can be funded by operating depending on the cost, some can be funded in that, you know, typical sort of 900,000 that has been our cadence, some that might be grant-funded. So would you recommend that would be something that we, or, you know, would we sort of think about this as early as this fall as part of our work?
Yeah. I mean, I've always thought five-year plans were kind of the better threshold because a lot can happen in 10 years. That said, you know, my takeaway from this is we're going to have to make some decisions about this building at some point, early, which is going to drive a lot of cost decisions. Not that I'm saying I want a whole new building or that we're trying to renovate or whatever, but the timing and pace at which we're going to address some of what's named here seems like an earlier discussion at a big level, specific to Ripley.
Sure. And I think too, when we talk about so much potentially changing, you know, in terms of the town, things that are developing, sites that are coming active, I just, you know, how do we piece those together potentially with the select board? I mean, I think that is what the September meeting is intended to do, that we have jointly with them. But this makes for a far more interesting discussion because we have, like, actual But this makes for a far more interesting discussion because we have like actual data to work with. I feel like that can be just so much more productive if we were to sit down.
Absolutely. And I think what was positive was not hearing any anything urgent that surprised us.
Yeah.
And even the urgent didn't feel direly urgent, so that was really validating. So that means you do have the time to make the plan and work collaboratively with the town as we know we need to and want to. And again, then, so I think for the three elementaries, you're in great shape to do that and have those conversations. I think this building is its own discussion.
Okay.
I would agree. I mean, that's where the bulk of that.
Yeah.
Since some of the biggest costs are roofs and boilers, last year we had Weston and Sampson come to us with quotes on the Alcott boiler replacement. So their number was 530, which is quite different from these boiler numbers. And I just, maybe you could, I don't need to know tonight, but.
We'll have a more granular plan. I think when George mentioned the one to five-year bucket, a lot more of that was the roof than the boilers, right? The roofs are more expensive than boilers. So I think one to five-year bucket, roofs was a big piece. I don't know what the exact cost was for the boilers.
It's like 75,000, which doesn't.
Boiler.
Okay. And so what we looked at for Alcott was a different system that's a hybrid, you know?
No, no, that's their that's their quote for just a regular boiler replacement.
Right. Some of the.
So that's probably the total cost of the project.
Yeah, with labor and all of that, maybe?
Right. Boiler, so I'm just, I think we probably need to dig down a little bit more to figure out what the cost of these things is so we don't put these numbers that aren't maybe.
Sure, sure.
I think we're going to have to do that across the board because there's a wide range in anything that we do of what it could cost.
Right.
Depending on how we approach it and how we think about it. So I think that's, this is to start that conversation, and then with every phase of it, we're going to have to think about how do we want to approach it. And again, I don't think that that is our our work to do alone. I think that's a town-wide, yeah, discussion.
Can you guys hear me?
Hey, Andrew, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, so sorry. I've dealt with these a lot, and by the way, this is a very detailed one, so I really appreciate it. But in my experience, these are always like precisely wrong, but directionally correct. And so it's just a guy, it's just a guide point, but I really appreciate the detail in this.
Great.
I have a question. When you were looking at all three elementary schools, it seems like the row you have, like there was not much in years five to 10. Did you look at, I don't even think there was anything in years five to 10. Did you look at all three together as to how you would plan it out or as individual schools to see what they needed?
Yeah, we looked at them individually, but the, I think also as far as we're, what row or what timeframe we put something in, which we changed that, you know, can be, that was our first recommendation, you know, that could change, you know, as we discussed more with Bob and Russ and others, you know, as far as, you know, hey, is that the right column for that piece to be in? But sometimes the, you know, the, whether it be the condition of the particular piece of equipment or whatever, you know, it seemed like you could move into that six to 10-year area as opposed to being with the, you know, the one to five that the other school was in. So it just, I think it was really just a judgment call at that point to say, hey, can this, does this need to be in this timeframe or can we push it in?
Some of these are going to rely on our own experience, too. Like when it comes to roofs, we have more problems with Thoreau than we do with Willard and Alcott.
Yeah.
And so we spend more time there. Our facilities team spends more time there, our vendors spend more time there. So like when we look at the three.
Yep.
You know, when it comes to time, we'll look at the one we're having the biggest problem with. So, and I think that these are recommendations on, you know, maybe best practice of when you should do them.
Right.
You know, I don't know that many schools do everything exactly when they should do it with facilities upkeep.
Right.
Probably in pretty good shape. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I think, you know, there might be things on here that we can extend.
Yeah.
So we need to, we have buckets. We need to look at one to five and what's in that one to five and what do we prioritize? And that's, there's another phase of this that we need to do. And we only really need to present for budget purposes, we'll do a five-year plan, but we need one year approved for next year. And I think we'll easily be able to identify what's in that one year, the two to five years, there'll be more discussion about that.
Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, you think about even your own roof in your house, like they might give you a 25-year warranty on your roof, but it might last 30 years, you know, so those are things. And then, you know, in looking at that in terms of like HVAC and the roof, I would assume that you'd have to do those kind of hand in hand because most of the equipment is on top of the roof.
Right. If you want to, exactly, because you're going to be penetrating the roof, et cetera. So you typically, if they're pretty close, you know, if they're being recommended, if the HVAC equipment is, you know, at the end of its service life, you'd ideally like to be able to do that for sure.
I think also like one of the, like with all of the schools, the elementary schools in particular, having such similar needs, are there ways in which we can save money by doing them at the same time? Like probably not roofing, but like paving and if you have a bigger project, it might.
Yeah.
If they're all wearing their, showing their wear. But, great, are there any other, this has been terrific, yeah?
What are the next steps? Because September will be barreling, you know, in front of us, and it's a very busy time for our staff. And so I hate to suggest summer work, but I feel like we have to at least do a little preparation and work with, our staff needs to work with the town staff to figure out because we've never done capital planning for Tier Two.
Right. So I reached out to the town manager earlier today. I think she's emailed me back while I sat here. So we're going to, I thought reaching out to her was the starting point, Bob and Anthony to be included, for sure.
Yep.
And seeing how we thought we could go about marrying the needs that all need to be considered together and bring you some information after we've had some discussion.
Excellent. Okay, great. We'll just wait to see.
Yeah.
Yeah. George, thank you so much.
Very welcome.
This has been really helpful and informative. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to talk more.
Indeed.
And also just, you know, shout out to our facilities, you know, guys that are doing this work all the time.
Yes.
And I think our buildings have been really well maintained since they've been built. So I think the report kind of validated that.
Yeah. Yeah, agreed.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks so much.
All right, Carlisle, come join us.
High school kids are not coming today.
Okay.
Schools reps are busy studying for finals.
Very, very fair. I would hope.
I think we can give their update. Thursday's the last day of school.
Right. There you go.
Okay.
All right, just give us a second to get organized here.
Sure.
Domingos is not coming. He's at work.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Great. All right, let's see. There's no clock in here.
6:38.
It's over there, but 6:38.
Okay. 6:38. I call the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to order. And given that we have a remote member joining, we'll roll call in.
Anderson present.
Is that a term?
No, it's Andrew.
Andrew.
Randy present.
Morano present.
Franken present.
Viola present.
Waterson present.
Great. Before we get to the next item, I just think.
For the minutes, Andrew is online and he.
Yeah. Thank you.
He is just traveling, so he may be jumping in and out.
Okay, that's great. I know Brian and I had our first meeting last week, I think, before we go to the next item. We're two weeks in, and I just, both of us wanted to say thank you to everyone. It's, we have jumped right into half, a couple weeks of everything from contract negotiations to just having two meetings at the end of the, end of the school year. But really and truly a heartfelt thank you to all of you guys on the, on the member and extended team as well. We have been learning a lot. We appreciate everyone's patience, so thank you, thank you very, very much. So, okay, so item number four, the student update, we will forego. I'm glad the students are studying and enjoying the end of the year. So the next portion will be the recognition interim assistant superintendent Shelley Chin. So I'll turn it to you, Lori.
Yeah, great, thank you. I'm going to invite Shelley Chin up to the table for a few minutes. So Shelley's coming on board July 1st as our interim assistant superintendent. We've had a really robust, it was a condensed but intense, I'd say, interview process. We didn't do the full-scale search because it's interim, but that doesn't mean she didn't meet a lot of people and spend a lot of time here. So we've gotten to know Shelley really well. She brings a lot of experience and background and a lot of really positive energy that is pretty contagious. So she's coming to us from the Waltham Public Schools. Remind me of your title.
If I remember myself, administrator of communications grants. Excuse me, I have some allergies and it's just.
Oh, great company here.
It happened right at 6 o'clock.
Of course.
Administrator of communications grants, partnerships and strategy. So I oversee a lot of the interventions, Title One, and I'm also the homeless liaison and work across the whole system. Been there for about 10 years, but at the heart of who I am is an educator. I, you know, studied at UCLA, taught in second grade elementary school for about five years, and then went to Teachers College in New York City and was working towards a second master's degree and worked with beginning teachers. But born and raised in Massachusetts, so back home, family, you know, all those things bring you back East Coast. And I've worked at Desi and now in Waltham, and excited to be here with all of you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We're very excited to have you.
So excited.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So she's formally going to start July 1st. We're working on plans of who will be around and here to support her. She's going to meet with me later in June before, before that. And then we're going to have July to really acclimate, which is always the gift of the summer start. And we're just really excited. She's, she understands it's interim. I think one of the strengths I heard in Shelley was understanding it's interim. So like, okay, what do you want me to do and what do you not want me to do? Because I'm here to sort of fold the fort, but take on whatever initiatives or projects you think need to be, to be managed. The administrators are very excited to have you come on board. We're looking forward to a really collaborative effort. I've shared her hiring with the staff and heard the same exact things. So I think we're excited for this new opportunity. There's so much in place already that it's sort of a strong foundation to build off of. And I think one of the big goals I have is that together, she and I do sort of a needs assessment. We know a few things we want to work on this year, but the bigger work is really to identify the priorities for the coming years and make that roadmap. I guess sort of like the facility discussion you just had, only in the teaching and learning environment. So we're excited to have Shelley and glad she could come tonight. I wanted to be sure all of you get a chance to meet her before she starts. She will be at every school committee meeting coming.
Lucky.
School year. Yep, she's excited by that, right?
It's nice, Tuesday nights.
Tuesday nights.
A little different than other school systems, so yeah.
Yeah. And more to come, but we just wanted you to get a chance to meet her.
That's great.
Wonderful, thank you, Shelley.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Yes.
And see you all in July.
Yes.
Hopefully you'll get some, some summertime break, too, as well.
We will.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley. Thanks for coming.
To Claritin.
Yeah. That's great. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Per the usual, our public comment period will be a period of 20 minutes. As a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public, so the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you are in the room and you would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me and you'll be called to speak. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. When called to speak, please state your name and address before you speak. We will go, every other, starting with a comment in the room, and then taking a comment on Zoom, and you will have a time limit of three minutes. I have three slips up here thus far. If anyone else in the room has any, please fill out the form and bring it up. We'll start with Connie Levine.
Sorry, I'm keeping my coat on. It's kind of cold in here. Anyway, I'm here to talk about Ellen Garrison. She's becoming my best friend. I just wanted to say, first of all, that it's been 60 years ago that Lyndon Johnson passed the Civil Rights Act, and he made some very interesting comments that I just wanted to allude to. He went back 188 years to 1776, and he talked about how the founding fathers had not only founded a nation for freedom, but founding a nation, but also he was forging ideals for freedom, not just political independence, but for personal liberty. And he reminded that this struggle was a turning point. And then he said, yet those who funded, who funded our, I'm sorry, founded our country did not stop there. They said they knew that freedom would be secured only if each generation fought to renew and enlarge its meaning. And this is what I thought was really interesting. He said, "From the minute men had conquered to the soldiers in Vietnam, each generation has been equal to that trust." So that caused me to think about what's going on here at the school committee. And, you know, the way I look at you guys, you know, you're a fairly young generation. And it just seems like that you're not stepping up and honoring what the town chose as a name for the middle school. And so I wanted you to think about that and think about Ellen and her contribution to civil rights. She was a worthy teacher. And, you know, we've named middle schools after white educators, a woman and a man, and here we have a black educator. And aside from Cynthia, everybody has voted against that, whereas the town has voted overwhelmingly to name her and name, name the school, not just a building, name the school after Ellen Garrison. She's certainly worthy of it. So I hope, this is my hope, during the summer, that you, you members will think about it more and think about all of the townspeople who turned out at that meeting to vote for Ellen Garrison Middle School. And I hope at least some of you can have a come-to Ellen moment during the summertime. And I always like to have a vision. So my vision is that the townspeople are here in the loud, in the large and loud crowd that they were on April 30th, and we're trying to present to you a heart and a soul for the middle school, the heart and soul of Ellen Garrison, that would focus on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging by honoring her and making her legacy part of the Ellen Garrison Middle School's core values and learning beliefs.
Thank you, Connie. I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to say that, you know.
I need to move to the next one. I really appreciate you exercising the democratic process. Thank you.
You get, you get the idea.
I did, yep. We're going to move to any comments on Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Any comments on Zoom?
I don't see any.
Okay. There's no comments on Zoom, so I'll move to Kristen Haggerty.
Kristen Haggerty, I'm a Concord resident, and my remarks are about three and a half minutes, if you would permit me. This has been a tough year for my child and my family. Our child suffered repeated psychological and emotional harm in school. Through the hardships, we found bright spots through support from old teachers at the integrated preschool and from the new school psychologist at Thoreau. But as we worked to support our child and try to prevent additional trauma, we were met with unanswered emails, canceled meetings, a system that denied our experiences and didn't deliver on a safe and healthy learning environment. It's hard enough to support a child in crisis and work full-time. Add to that the responsibility of keeping on top of all the communication to the district to the district to ensure follow through and passionately advocating that no further harm be done to your child or to other children. So I consider it extremely disrespectful when calls, emails, and requests for meetings go unanswered. And when I witnessed firsthand the latest trauma inflicted by a school administrator, I was shocked, disappointed, and outraged, as I'm sure you would be. And I conveyed my shock, disappointment, and outrage. The administrator made no attempt to acknowledge these emotions or make me feel heard or seen. Before we parted, he said he would reflect on my feedback. This is the email I received from the superintendent an hour later. I am writing to share concerns about the recent communication approach with the building administrators. Expecting drop-in meetings is not realistic and not how we operate. When those meetings were granted and it was not acceptable for inappropriate comments and aggressive tones, I have directed all of the administrators not to accept drop-in requests and ask you to leave. There is not a need to engage with Alcott, so please don't expect that or stop by again. When you have needs at Thoreau, you can request an appointment, call, or email. We understand your stress over your child, but also expect only respectful and calm interactions. We are in schools where adults need to be the model for children. The superintendent nor her administrators asked me about the mental health or well-being of my child. She did not ask about my grievances. She did not ask how many of my respectful and calm communications had gone unanswered. Instead, I was chastised and school administration was instructed to further ignore my concerns. Unfortunately, my experience is not an isolated incident. You may recall public comments from Akia Abbas, a Boston parent, in the March 22, 2022, school committee meeting where she stood for many families when she called for transparency and accountability because, quote, "There are outstanding issues from families that have not been acknowledged or responded to," unquote. Like Ms. Abbas said then, I agree that, quote, "The district's response to my concern were demoralizing, condescending, and patronizing," unquote. Adults do need to be the model for children. And as such, adults should seek to understand the valid concerns of families and students with curiosity, not shut them down when they communicate in pain. I was warned by many people not to speak up in fear of retaliation. Two years ago, we were in the same place. And Ms. Abbas said, may I continue?
I'm so sorry. I.
May I conclude with this? In the spirit of modeling for our children, I request that the school committee conduct an open and constructive evaluation of the superintendent every year.
I have to uphold this. I'm sorry. Thank you. I have a blue sheet from Mari Weinberg, unless there's another one on Zoom. I'm assuming no. Thank you very much.
Mary Weinberg, 26 Hillside Avenue. I have a question for everybody. What do the, what does the Empire State Building, the Chrysler Building, the CBS Building, and the Segren's Building, what do they have in common? Anybody know? None of them are schools. I made that up. So let's see. I'm 79 years old. I moved here in 1979. My daughter, Kier, went through all the school system from Thoreau to Sanborn to the high school. She was a cheerleader. She doesn't want her jacket, so Mama wears it. I'm coming about the Ellen Garrison School. She's very busy, so she didn't know what was going on. And she was on the porch two weeks ago. And I said to her, told her what's going on. And I said, you know, Kier, call her CT, what would have happened if, when you were in elementary school and then this happened? And she said to me, and she went to college in Virginia and then London, and then she went back to Manhattan FIT for product and package design. She said, Mom, it would have changed my life. I would have, when we moved here, I knew Thoreau. We went to Louisa May Alcott's house. I knew all that. But my goodness, if this had happened while I was going to school and if it had been named the Ellen Garrison School, I would have taken it throughout my life, and it would have added and changed. And she went through at Sanborn, the facing history in ourselves. And to this day, she calls me when she does things, and she says, Mom, it was all because that facing history in ourselves. I did this. And she did many big things in New York City and here. Anyway, that's my comments about, I was presenting the Ellen Garrison School of projecting forward. It never occurred to me till two weeks ago to ask my daughter, looking back, how it would have affected her life. And she's close to 50 now. Thank you. Thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you. I'm assuming there's nothing coming through on Zoom. Just to double check. I have S. Cobbs. Is that correct?
Liz.
Liz. Sorry, couldn't see it. My apologies.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Mm-hmm.
It's for Zoom. Okay. My name is Elizabeth Cobbs, 31 Pondville Lane in Concord, and I'd like to.
Can you just speak up just a tiny bit so I can hear you?
I'd like to continue Kristin Hagerty's comments and out of respect for Kristin and her family. I was warned by many people not to speak up for fear of retaliation. Two years ago, we were in the same place. And Ms. Abbas said, quote, "We understand that we and our families may be subject to retaliation as part of our efforts in raising these harsh realities in our district." What kind of district are we in where families need to fear that advocating for their child's health and well-being may actually do more harm than good? It certainly doesn't sound like the kind of district that is discussed in these meetings. In the spirit of modeling for our children, I request that the school committee conduct an open and constructive evaluation of the superintendent each year, which I don't believe is happening right now. The willingness to solicit and integrate constructive feedback is a hallmark of a good leader. Seeking input from families who have been systematically repressed is an important part of that feedback process. I respectfully request that the school committee and Lori Hunter reflect on the harm that has been inflicted, seek information with curiosity, with care, and compassion, and make a written plan to improve collaboration with families based on a trauma-informed lens. There is a traumasensitiveschools.org site that would be a good place to start. By denying experiences that families are bringing to her and instructing the administration to do the same, the superintendent is breeding an environment of mistrust and resentment. And that is not what Concord nor Carlisle stands for. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on Zoom? Sorry for that. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We are now going to move on to the consent agenda. And just one note, Cynthia, we did hear you on the last one. So we are going to move forward with one consent agenda, but we ask that members vote either RNA for both or RNA for region.
We have to roll call it because Andrew.
Yep. All right.
I move to.
Before, first, does anyone have anything they want to remove before we?
Good. I vote to move the consent agenda as outlined in our June 11 meeting.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Discussion on this. So Anderson, I for both.
Andrew, you're up if you can hear this.
Yep. Her check, I for both.
Marano, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Viola, I for region.
Watterson, I for region.
Discussion?
Nope.
We did that, right?
Correspondence.
Correspondence. So we had zero for the region, zero for CPS. And then one thing that, were you going to say something?
Oh. Getting ready for my next turn.
Yeah, I was going to say. One thing that I talked to Dr. Hunter about is we do want to have the Carlisle voice in some of this. And so we don't have any correspondence, but we did want to note that the eighth grade graduation is happening this Thursday in Carlisle. We're very excited. It's a really special class that you'll get to know next year. So we wish them well. And in the future, we may have some correspondence that doesn't come into the, we're going to encourage people to put them in through the email. But if for anything else, if any small updates, we'll put them here.
I love this idea.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Did you have a DC trip? Did they go in a DC?
They did go to DC. They had a wonderful trip. We just actually got the update. We had the Carlisle School Committee meeting just before this from 4 to 6. Coming in hot. Yeah, they had the eighth grade trip. They actually did a lot of really great things. The middle school students also had the opportunity to go up to Quebec this year. So they've done some really exciting things. The debate club went pretty far in the area. So you're having some pretty smart kids coming in. We're really excited to welcome them here.
Great.
Awesome. All right. So we'll move on to the superintendent chairs and liaisons updates. So we'll start with you, Lori.
Sure. I'll offer some highlights. They're a little eclectic, so you'll just bear with that. I think first I'll note that I've had positive end-of-year meetings with the Metco PTG and CPAC. So we're in really good standing there in terms of efforts to make sure that they feel heard and that they're included. And that's going to continue into the summer and fall. As you mentioned, grade eight went to DC last week and came back successfully, a little less travel woes than last year. So that was great. Weather was better, too, not as hot, and no smoke restrictions. That was a year ago.
Oh, my gosh, I forgot about that.
So very uneventful, which was the way we like it.
Blue skies.
Yeah, yeah. We are in the throes of our own end-of-year celebrations at the transition points. I've now attended three grade five moving on ceremonies, and grade eight is tomorrow morning. Ours is tomorrow morning. So we're excited by that and watching the celebration of their time together. And then the look forward is, that's one of the benefits of this job. I get to look forward with them, and then I see them in the next building. So it's just great. A couple updates. We did find out that the space we had secured for the launch program isn't viable. So that's been a, I tried to put a rosy glow on it in my update to you, but we're distraught. Now we're on to Plan B, so we're working on that in our thinking. There might be a space. We looked, Angel and I went out Friday afternoon to look at space. We didn't lose any time. Some might be more move-in ready than this one was. So we might be able to pick some time up there if that were to be how it plays out. So.
Any other, any locations that are as walkable?
Maybe. I'll leave it at that for now. Maybe. It's all really tentative at the moment.
Is it just that one space or?
We don't know.
We don't know, because there are a few spaces that might be open.
We're trying, we're considering that.
Okay, good.
In terms of summer programs, we're going to hit the ground running. Next week, Willard will start to host the newcomer students for the beginning of their summer program. And then we'll get into ESY the 24th. And our regular virtual tutoring this year starts the 24th. So we're just really busy and moving right on into summer programming. And the last thing I'll note, and I did send this to you by email since it was in the Boston Globe this morning, the DESI group that I am, sit on the advisory committee of, the Racial Imbalance Advisory Committee, which is a formal committee of DESI as an outcome of one of the laws. And I was, I applied and was grateful to be accepted as the only superintendent. A really productive year with that committee. It's a very, a group from different backgrounds, different positions, a lot of school districts represented, many urban, not surprising. But they were really ready to make some statements here this year. It's a three-year term, so I'm in year one, right? I'm in the quieter phase of the term there. Some of them are in year three. And we did a lot of data diving, and that's what became the main focus of the report that was released last week. I wasn't clear that the chair was about to release it as publicly as he just did, which is fine. But, you know, there's some important data there about how, you know, we're not as desegregated as a state as we wish we were. And some recommendations for what that can look like, Metco being in that list a couple of times. Can that be expanded? I was excited because the threshold we're recommending, the threshold for a desegregated environment has been 50%, which just is an outdated number. So it's now 70. Either way, right? That can go either way. You know, too homogeneous of any race is not, not, you know, segregated. So we're now recommending a 70% threshold, which I get more excited by because the demographic here has really shifted. I'm not going to even say slowly shifted. And we're getting really close to under that 70% mark, which I feel like really starts to bring this richness, which if you're in the schools, you can feel and see it. And the more we diversify, the better. So and it validates the work we're doing is welcoming and families feel like they belong. So a lot more to come, but just since the Globe grabbed it pretty quick once it was released. And I'm sure DESI and the secretary's office are deciding their next steps, but.
So does that group, will it, it will continue on next year? Do you take a little break over the summer?
Yeah, we take a break over the summer. It's a school year calendar. I have two more years to participate. Been really valuable for sure.
And do they have a report every year?
Yes. We, by law, we owe an annual report to the commissioner. There's at least one, if not two, associate commissioners who sit advisory to the committee.
What's the charge of the committee?
It really is to examine the racial imbalance and the educational impacts. It's a broad charge, which I think gives the committee latitude to do. We also looked at a few other things over the course of the year. I also noticed, too, that we've been selected for review. And one piece of the review, which I actually got information today that we probably aren't going to be held accountable for this time, it's going to be a little more focused. But a big part of the review has a lot of equity work and, you know, initiatives, and where are you in that work? So it was, I got to be on the advisory group. They had other DESI folks come in and get our feedback on that. And then two months later, I got invited to the review. So I'm not sure if that was just one big coincidence or not. But, you know, DESI is trying to move. I think the part I shared as a concern coming out of the committee was, there was a very bold statement by the chair at one point that DESI has done tangential work to move things forward, but not taken, taken it on as a priority initiative. And with districts that are really struggling, like some of them are, and not serving kids of color well and large numbers, you know, when and how do they start to prioritize that differently? And I think the gift I have is like, what role do we all play in that? Is it Metco? Is it for some schools, other, more school choice? And to me, that funding formula is not really, is what it should be to welcome that idea. So a lot more to come, but it's been a really exciting experience. And I leave, like I learn things every time I'm on, the depth of knowledge at the table. So.
That's great.
Yeah. And it's Zoom, so we're all over the state and we're together and all that good stuff that comes with Zoom. So really great.
Wasn't our EBSI daily update?
Yeah, this morning.
Yeah.
Two articles today, columnist and.
The data is really compelling. And part of the complaint, for lack of a better word, was that DESI puts out tons of data. One, we're in our own world of understanding the inaccuracies of some of it, which is a different discussion. And two, there's a lot there, but there's not everything there. Like, we actually charged DESI to go further data dive as a committee at one point because the way they presented didn't allow for the disaggregation that the committee wanted to do. And that became a topic of its own, that it was hard to find some of the telling points that brought all this to light. So. Interesting. Thank you for serving on that committee.
Yeah.
Like, doesn't, benefits us, it benefits them.
Yeah.
And I guess, I know that's extra time for you. I was selected because of the work this whole district is doing. It's not just because of me. It's because we're a collective entity of proven goals and progress and really clear statements of our intentions. And that got noticed. So.
That's great.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's awesome. Great. So yeah, so I think from, from a standpoint with the, we're going to get into a second, the liaison's assignments that we're still working through. But as Carrie and I are both starting to onboard, you've done a great job of starting to reach out to folks in town just to introduce ourselves to various committee leaders. So yeah, that's something from a liaison standpoint that we're working through. As a reminder, we have posted a meeting for Friday at 4:00 PM to discuss and vote on union agreements as well as FO.
FOIA for CPS.
Public records request.
Request, yes. Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Are there any other updates, though? I know we just met last week and we gave the liaison updates. Are there any other ones we want to go through?
No.
Okay. Why don't we have the discussion? Are you still good to share your screen for the liaisons?
Yeah.
So we mentioned in the last, well, Carrie's working on getting that up. Last, I can't believe, last week, we were talking about different liaisons. And so what we did was, there is a kind of a chart that we can go through with all the different groups that we liaise to in town. We have a lot of expertise around the table. So we have a preliminary view, and I think we could discuss if everyone is landing where they want to.
Can you allow me to share?
Oh, yep. You should be able to.
We can always read it out loud, too, if we need to.
No, I cannot.
That's weird.
Okay.
Do you want me to send you the link? Or Julie, do you want to try?
I can share it.
You can share? Oh, that's odd. Okay.
I don't think I have anything suspect up here.
Don't read into it.
All right, says I can. Okay, there it is.
There we go.
There's my screen. What open towns do I have? Do headaches feel like, okay, let me get off this?
Oh, God, sorry.
Yeah, that's a wrong screen.
Now I'm looking about my headache, my allergy headache. Sorry.
That's I need a claritin.
Everybody. Sorry about that. Oh, God, now this has moved. Okay. I was just trying to make sure I didn't have anything weird up there.
I don't.
You all feel your stress of the unanticipated screenshot. One of my kids will text me.
No, I'm really disappointed that mine didn't work.
I know, I know.
Would have missed that one.
Yeah, so we have, you can see up on the screen here, for those of you on Zoom, should be able to see it. So just based on initial feedback from members of the committee, we have laid them out. So the adult and community education. So the adult and community education.
Wait, before you run through it.
Yeah.
This is all up for discussion. So this is based on what everybody has like shared about their preferences. So this is what we've heard and we can discuss it after that and then we'll vote on it later.
Absolutely. Correct. So yeah, so just to give an overview, adult and community education, I raised my hand for that. Brian from a Carlisle Finance Committee, I think that would either be me or Brian, so Brian, thank you. Concord Finance Committee, Alexa has raised her hand for that. Concord Select Board, Tracy, the D E I Commission, both Tracy and Carrie. The P G Access Advisory Committee, Cynthia. Concord Financial Audit Advisory, we have Cynthia and possibly Brian or myself. I should have said that, sorry. Special Education, CPAC, myself. CMS Building Committee, Alexa and Andrew. Calendar Committee, we had a number of people raise their hand for that. Sustainability Roundtable, Cynthia. And Thoreau Playground Committee, we have Carrie. So from a discussion standpoint, is there anyone that sees their name next to something that we may have put in accidentally?
Or accidentally?
Or is there something that people would like to be, you know, involved in that their name is not next to currently that should be added to it?
I just want to point out one thing and it's mostly to myself, is the PEG Access, the Financial Audit Advisory Committee and other committee. You're a voting member, so you count to the quorum.
Oh, it's Adult and Community Ed.
Adult and Community Ed, yeah.
So that is a big committee, so I wouldn't worry so much about the quorum. I think it's probably like 12 or 15.
Adult and Community Ed.
Yes.
Well, one of the things that, sorry, this is going to go, you finish, sorry.
No, no, it's just like PEG Access, that's been like.
So are you saying we should approve this slate this evening?
Yes.
That's, I was going to have the same comment, so I, yeah.
Yeah, it's two cycles because the select board needs to nominate and then.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I'm thinking we should approve this slate if we can find agreement. Just because a lot of these meetings are, take place over the summer and to your point.
Is it not on the agenda?
Oh, but you can add it.
It's just like totally innocuous.
For Financial Audit Advisory, you have to pick one other member and move them forward because you can't have a, you know, either or kind of a.
Correct. And that was, and that's what we have to, this was not a finalized document. We obviously, just more us mapping what people had mentioned interested. So good point. Brian and I will have to decide who's going to do that one, for example.
I'm sorry, what's the 10-second overview of that?
It's, so it means, so it has the regional high school, they review the audits of the regional high school, the regional district, excuse me, Concord Public Schools, the light plant. Yeah, I feel like there's one other. I don't, do they do? Town, yes. I don't think they do like the rec or anything else like that.
So the only question I think Brian and I both had, and we put a Carlisle name, is it seems like quite a lift for a Carlisle member to be a part of. So that was our only comment to, we're happy to join from a regional perspective because we saw the C C R S D.
So I think it would be fine. It meets, well, it didn't meet at all this year so far. Hasn't met since September, as far as I understand, for some reason. I'm not sure why, what's going on, but.
Matt Johnson was the chair, the previous select board chair, and they just haven't met.
Okay.
Technically the, anyway, there's.
I don't know. It's a lot of reasons, I think. It's, it's like five meetings a year. And I think just so you can check in with the chair, who'd be Wendy Raveli, you wouldn't need to attend the light plant audit. You wouldn't need to attend the Concord Public Schools.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, just so we can break off from those.
It would probably be two meetings.
That we're not curious, but.
It's allowable?
Yes.
It's allowable.
Yeah, I know, yes, she's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I mean, we could check it with.
Concord Select Board will have to approve.
Ultimately approve the appointment.
So they would come back and say, no, but I'm pretty sure it doesn't matter.
I think, you're right, because we've, yeah.
Yeah, I know you're right. Yeah.
And Julie, I'm happy to take it because it does kind of align with Carlisle FinCom anyway.
I was really hoping you were going to say that. Thank you very much for your service to the community.
Usually morning meetings, that's in the past, like eight o'clock or something like that.
Maybe get them to the agenda to do the Concord things last, so you don't have to sit through the C M L P and things like that.
They usually dedicate a meeting or sometimes, we'll see, because we're so backed up now, so.
Okay. And then obviously, like I said, the.
We see, do you want to be, I think we only need one person for the D E I Commission. Do you want that? And I'm happy to remove myself. The one thing we were talking about was for some of these committees, having like a backup person.
Yeah.
So like Select Board, FinCom, those are really big commitments. And then also, D E I is not recorded. Yeah, so I feel like that might be, I'm happy to be a backup if you want to be the primary or vice versa.
Yeah.
I want to show you the two of you. I think that's, I think that's great.
Yep.
Okay.
Can we go back? So are we, are we, does anyone else want to, for the adult and community education, like I said, I'd love to do it. But if, if anyone else has an interest in, okay. I just want to go in order. And then obviously, Brian, I think that's a clear one for the Finance Committee.
Should I put you as a backup?
Yeah, sure. Concord Finance, thank you, Alexa. Anyone else have an interest in being a backup?
I'm interested in being my.
I'll do it. I'll do it, yeah.
Thank you. Same thing with the Select Board, Tracy, thank you. Anyone want to be a backup to Tracy?
I'll do it. I'll do it, Tracy.
Yep.
The D E I Commission we just spoke about, okay, so the P G Access Advisory Committee, I'm happy to be the backup with you, Cynthia.
They're a member though, you can't.
Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, you can have a backup on.
That's what you're mentioning, the P Gs.
Right.
Yeah, there's no backup.
No backup, okay. Well, thank you for doing it. All right, Financial Audit, we just talked about. Special Education, I raised my hand for that. I'm happy to do it. I do it in Carlisle. Does anyone, that's, I think that can have more than one person. Does anyone want to serve as a backup?
I can back you up if you can come.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I've been there before. I enjoy that group.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, they're great.
CMS Building Committee, we have Alexa and Andrew.
No backups, no members.
Members.
Okay, perfect.
I'm happy to remove myself from the committee.
Me too. It's a one meeting a year. It's, well, it's two, maybe three. I don't care. I did it this year. It's.
I will do it. I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
I feel like I've, I'll do it.
Okay, good.
If you need it from, for the, for the region, if you need Brian or I, for the calendar, I thought we both said we would happily do it from a Carlisle, if you need us.
So.
One of us will do it. Sustainability, I know there's a lot happening in that space.
Yeah, so there's two things. And what we meant here was the committee. Yeah, we're going, we might go to quarterly. That's why I changed it there. So there's a discussion there. That's the district-wide committee that Priscilla runs for us. So we might go to quarterly and streamline meetings a bit. There's a second need that isn't listed here, but Concord Committee needs to weigh in on this. Eric Sims, the Concord Sustainability Director, has called a roundtable of representation from a wide number of the committees in town. So both the professionals and a committee member are asked to attend. It's June 25th, two weeks, 7:00 P. M. I think it's at the, I'll have to check the location now that I say that. I'm not sure. I gotta, I need to check again. I'm, I'm planning to attend, so one of you, or maybe two of you could attend. I don't think three could, but they're hoping for our participation. The region's welcome to be there, but most of the sustainability discussions end up being CPS oriented, so, yeah.
Yeah, I can't make it unfortunately, Cynthia.
I think I can make it too. If it's seven, I can make it.
I think so. Okay, great. Thank you.
It'd be great to have both of you, actually.
Yeah, okay, great.
I'll get you the details.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, well, I'm going to remove that from here. That's just a one-time thing.
It might be recurring, but we're going to have to learn more when we're there.
Well, we can always add it.
Eric's vision is.
I was going to give him a lot of assignments from this.
Okay, well, you can come to the meeting now and do that.
And then, yeah, and then the last one we have is Thoreau Playground Committee. Carrie, you're going to, you've raised your hand. Is anyone else?
Anyone? Thoreau?
Great job, Carrie. Thank you for doing that.
We have a playground expert at the end of the table with Brian.
I know, Brian, I'm going to be, I'm going to be calling.
Need any help?
I can back you up if you need me to ever go.
I stopped sharing. I don't know why.
You sure did.
Yeah.
Well, I did that on purpose, so that.
Nice effect.
It actually is perfect timing, so any other comments? Otherwise, do we, did you say you want to take a vote on this? You wanted it at the end?
I think we should because, you know, there are groups that have members that need meetings.
Can I entertain a motion?
Oh, I would move.
One question. Is there, is there a capital planning committee I heard about this week? And do we need to add that?
So I need to talk to the town manager and figure out what structure we're using, so.
T B D.
Stay tuned, I guess. I don't know if there is. There was an extensive one two years ago, so it's a matter of what we're doing next, so.
I don't get that feeling, but.
I didn't either get that feeling, so more to come.
So you think there's going to be, are you saying you think there's going to be a committee or there's not going to be a committee?
I do not.
You don't? Okay.
No, I think we're just going to try to slide in a tier-two process into what the framework that the Capital Planning Committee created for tier three, tier one, excuse me.
Who's going to slide it in? Sorry. Just, just, oh, we're going to slide it in?
Or he's going to meet with Carrie.
Oh, okay.
Let me talk to Carrie and understand what's happening.
Yeah. More to come, as usual.
Always more to come.
Want to just do it in action items?
Okay.
It does either way. It doesn't matter. Go for it.
Go.
I'm going to do it.
Yep. I move to approve the slate of liaison assignments as just discussed.
Second.
And roll call.
Discussion.
Discussion. Well, thank you, everyone. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Looking forward to it.
That was easy.
Yeah, it was easy. It was good.
Yeah.
Nice job.
We'll take a roll call vote.
Anderson, I for both.
Hurchak, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Viola, I for region.
Watterson, I for the region.
Somebody's going to send a trimmed-down version to Mary Hartman.
We can do it.
The ones that need to be approved by the Concord.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Thanks. That good.
Love to hear about everybody's thing else, but.
Thank you.
Do you want us to just reach out to the liaisons on the committees? Like, how do you want us to? Do you want us to do anything?
No, I think, why don't, why don't Carrie and I synthesise it?
Okay.
Post it, send it. And then I think for each committee, maybe we can do an email introduction of whoever the new person is. Obviously, most of us, I think, know those respective people. Why said us? I don't, but most of you do. But we'll get there, so thank you. Carrie, you want to go over the meeting schedule?
Yes, Alexa, do you want to do sharing the?
Oh, yeah, I can do that. Hold on, I just got to get my.
I think it's my, I haven't updated this computer in like years, so it's probably just not updated. So I will do that.
So while you're pulling that up, I think just a, a quick narrative on the, the meeting schedule, we had a chance to review it. Obviously, we heard feedback from anyone had, had feedback on the preliminary view. But the biggest changes that you'll note when we do share is, for example, April vacation. Having a meeting on a Tuesday means that both Erin, Dr. Hunter, and those of us here had to work over vacation. And so I think just bumping it a day just gives people the ability to come back and post it for open meeting on a Monday and then meet on a Wednesday, so on and so forth. I think it also just serves the community better by having everyone just fresh and prepared. So those are some of the changes at a high level.
Yeah, so we are going to talk about the school committee meetings. And then we are also going to spend a little bit of time talking about this current summer. So we'll start with just the meeting schedule for next year. August 20th is, will be our first meeting of the school year. That is not, there's no change in that. Where we, we switched September to September 3rd and September 17th. Because, to accommodate just different schedules. October and November are, are the same, so October 8th and 22nd, November 5th.
We confirmed we can have a meeting on Election Day?
I have not confirmed that.
So town discourages that, remember? We got a little.
Yeah, we had to change our town election meeting.
So that would be November 5th, if we look at a calendar.
Be kind of a weird time to have a school committee meeting.
It would be a presidential election.
Yeah.
It's kind of a big deal.
It'd be like, you know.
Let's put it on.
Nail biter and all.
So if we move that.
So we move it to like noon.
If we were going to, if I could actually, just thinking about Thanksgiving too. If you were going to move it, I guess my preference would be the 12th versus the 26th.
If you had to move it.
But we want to move the one on the 5th, though.
Right, but I'm saying if you're going to replace it with a November meeting, she doesn't want to come the week of Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah, no, we've.
No, no, we do.
Purposefully, yeah. So if we removed the 5th.
And we did the 12th, that's the day after Veterans Day.
That doesn't, we'd still, we just have to post on Thursday.
Earlier.
Yeah.
That doesn't have as much impact, yeah.
But that would mean two back to back, wouldn't that be the 19th?
Wait, you'd have, yeah, you'd have 12, 19.
We'd have 12 and 19, back-to-back meetings.
So I guess the question comes just like what we did with April. I mean, is there a strong attachment to Tuesday? I know for predictability, but with enough notices, it makes sense to move that to Wednesday.
That 5th to the 6th.
Carlisle meetings, yeah.
I mean, we're pretty, we can check.
I think we've seen a.
We haven't seen a schedule yet, so we could be first to move here.
Beat the rest of you two.
Charlie Bird gets the worm.
Something to think about, just because I think the back-to-back are hard.
Yes, we learned, we reminded ourselves of that this week.
Yes, it is.
Especially at that time of year, there's just a lot going on.
So you'd say the 6th and the 19th? Are you saying Wednesday? Okay.
The 6th.
Carlisle most likely wouldn't be the 6th anyhow.
Correct. Second week. We only meet once a month. I like trying new things. That's great.
Great.
So we'd amend to November 7th. I mean, 6th.
November 6th.
Sorry.
So November 6th and 19th for the November.
Yep.
Okay.
And the only thing that you would maybe run into, because people's schedules aren't out yet, D E I Commission meets on Wednesdays. I think, I think they're the only group, though, that meets on a Wednesday. We've had overlap too this past year, so it's fine.
Okay. For December, we added a week. We added the 3rd, so it'll be the 3rd and the 17th in anticipation of budget conversations. I think we talked about this at last week's meeting. No changes to January. As Julie mentioned, February, we're just going to try moving it from Tuesday to Thursday, the week after, so February 27th. And March, there would be no changes, so March 11th and 25th, April 8th. Which is no change. And then moving the 28th to the 30th for the same reason as February, so just to accommodate for vacation schedules. And again, these changing days are just trial. If they don't work, we'll go back.
I think I'm always for trying new things.
Yeah, let's just try it.
This is excellent. I love this.
May 13th and 27th, no change. June 3rd and 10th, we're hopeful because we had to shift things back that we might actually be able to cancel one of those.
Yeah, we're going to have to watch, it just dawned on me, we're going to have to watch what town meeting.
Town meeting is likely to be in the 3rd.
You're going to be meeting to the end.
Town meeting. Yeah, that's right. That's right. You're right.
At that point, you could just go the 10th.
You're going to have to adjust when the warrant closes and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's probably going to be later. Town election, there's so many things we don't know.
Yeah, okay.
It's actually hard to do this this year for that, so.
Yeah, for that reason. There's a lot of unknowns.
Maybe that we.
We can meet during the major events of 2020.
And I think, you know, we can approve this schedule with the, with that caveat, right?
I mean, I think.
We'll be flexible.
We did intentionally miss, like, we're going from April 8th to the 30th, which is a big gap for us. But that's to, to miss all of the, to not try to interfere with all of the 250th.
Even if we move town meeting to June, that means all the other stuff that usually happens in February moves right into that bad spot. So it's sort of like you're, I don't know.
When is the town election?
We don't know.
We don't know. I have another question about February. So April, you moved to Wednesday.
No, Thursday. It's Tuesday, Thursday.
30th.
Is that a Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I only ask because I think you said Wednesday for February, but the 27th is a Thursday.
Yeah, summer, Wednesday is summer.
Sorry, Thursday, sorry.
Well, what would you like?
I don't care. Well, the only thing, well, so FinCom meets on Thursdays.
Because if we, if we have it on Tuesday after April vacation, the administrative team and.
The chairs.
The chairs have to work during vacation.
Yeah, it's hard to.
In order to post it and get it ready.
We've tried to skip it. It throws everything else off.
So we're just trying to move it from Tuesday to.
Give a big blaring thing to FinCom. Just give a big blaring thing to FinCon.
So, so FinCon meetings are on Thursdays, so I guess the preference would be Wednesday.
And that would be, that would actually work, because we're moving them November 1 to Wednesday, so any shift is just.
Would be on a Wednesday.
Okay.
Tuesday to Wednesday.
I think that's wise.
That's better.
So this would be Wednesday.
Always looking out for the finest.
So it'd be February 28th and April 30th.
No, February 26th. Went the wrong direction.
The 26th is a Wednesday, February 26th, okay.
When do you open?
I could.
The new school?
Yes, we will clean up the dates and resend them, so you all end up with the same thing. And do calendar invites.
25th, February 25th, the kids are in the new.
I wouldn't even meet that week, honestly.
What was that?
The new opening of the new school.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, that's gonna happen primarily over the vacation, but, so.
Well, let's have it, we, we can.
It's always harder, it's harder to schedule meetings when we don't have them.
You're gonna have to rejigger this once you get the town meeting schedule, probably, so, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Okay.
Thank you guys for working on this.
Is it September 3 and 17, or is it 10 and 24?
3 and 17.
3 and 17.
Okay, that's fine, it's fine with me, I just thought I had.
Changed it from last time.
Do you have one of those as a workshop, August?
No.
We need a workshop.
I think that was your next.
So, okay, so that's the schedule for the school year, yes? Okay.
Those are all business meetings.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so the next is we were gonna talk about summer planning.
Perfect segue.
We have a couple of questions, one is, um, the biggest thing we wanted to talk about was potentially thinking about, and we, I put this in the agenda overview for just thought, um, there has been a lot of conversation around how do we address policy and, and specifically keeping policy up to date. It is like almost an impossible task, uh, because the book is, you know, as big as the CPS presentation. And so one idea that Dr. Hunter and Julie and I were talking about was potentially having a workshop over the summer when things are slower in the schools, um, and doing it, like, just powering through the entire book and updating it, whether it be as a whole committee, everyone would obviously be welcome, or whether it be as a whole committee, a quorum, um, open to the, open to anyone, go through the whole book, pull out anything that is controversial or difficult to bring to the whole committee, but really do a, a lot of the administrative kind of busy work that's just updating, as we all know, happens in our meet, in our workshops. And we are proposing that as an option for this summer, and, um, starting with the As and moving all the way through the Is? I think it's A to I.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I mean, we just did JK 11, I mean, JK 11.
I assume we wouldn't touch anything that's this year, 23, 24.
Yeah, that we just did, yeah. So, um, updating the whole book for, on three half-days, so from 9 to 12 on July 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, that is what we are proposing.
How would you do the first and second read?
No, so, so basically what we would do is we would do all of this work and then bring it to the full committee for a first and second read.
That would take a whole media tour.
So, the thought is a lot of it wouldn't be, wouldn't need to be, like, we would talk about it, we would list it, excuse me, list it, but we wouldn't have to, like, go through all of the process of, of it, because.
For the public, I really, our responsibility is policy, and I think for the public, just, we have to go through those policies in public, with the public there.
So if, if we did, um, so it's a good point, I mean, Brian, you have experience, you just did the whole policy for, for Carlisle, I mean, the, the half-day workshops, we could do in public.
Yeah, we would, we would have to be in public.
Correct, would be in public, so I think that would be good, and we would just do, like, almost a briefing in the business meeting, as you said, um, in August with the, with the changes and updates, but the actual deliberation, we're making those edits.
For first read and second read, we read, read, one of them, we read the policy, basically, we say, here's the.
I know, but we're, in our policy workshops, what we kind of decided last year was that that policy workshop was a first read. And then, so it would be going through all of these, the first read, we would be doing it, a lot of them are really administrative.
Yes, and I think if we have a quorum in that meeting, that is, that can be.
A first read, they would be in the public, they would be recorded, it would be for, up for, it's.
I'll just put my two cents in, I am a person who would like to see a policy subcommittee, um, like most, almost every other school committee around us does, which has a two or three-person membership, um, go through the, do it that way, but I know the committee doesn't see, doesn't have that same perspective, so.
We have a new committee, so I think we're open to talking about it.
That's how we do it in Carlisle.
What did you do in Carlisle?
So we have a policy subcommittee, so for us, it's two, um, two out of the five. We meet, we, basically, every year, we take a third of the policies, so that way, every three years, you're, you're touching them. And so we grab our list of what we're gonna look at, starting in September, we meet every other week, we go through it, we make the changes, and then, once we're done, then we put it on the agenda.
For a first read and a second read, or?
We don't.
You don't do that, okay.
No.
I have an idea that might work.
The expectation is.
You've read it, yeah.
And if there are questions on any of them, we talk about it, but otherwise, like, you see our agenda and you'll see however many policies.
Yeah.
It's a five-minute process.
Okay.
With the whole school committee, because the.
Subcommittee.
The committee has done heavy lifting.
Yeah.
And it works, it worked fairly well this past year.
I have an idea, what if we synthesize both ideas? 'Cause I'm even looking at those dates and they're not gonna work for me. You convene, you convene a policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
That meets over those three days during the summer.
And those are the first days, we can.
Right.
Change them.
Yeah, well, whatever.
Yeah.
That meets, that really does the deep dive work, and then, we can do, so let's say, I can't do the math in my head, like, in September, we do the As, you guys bring to us, the policy subcommittee, the As and the Bs, and in the two September meetings, we do a first read and a second read. In the October, it's the Cs and the Ds, so you've done your work, the only thing, it will be challenging for you all to take good notes, so that you remember those things several months later, but if, if someone thinks that they could.
I hope they record it.
Well, sure, no, of course, yeah, you record them, you take good notes.
You can live that half-day, those three half-days again.
And then, and you sort of, and you do it like that, so, and then additionally, anything that requires more attention in those, in those, um, sections, could then be brought to the full committee for larger discussion, so, you know, let's say 98% of the As and the Bs, you've got under control, you make your recommendation, we sort of do that, anything that is more, that requires potentially more participation, because there's some complicated things, or we have some weird outlier policy, which is like two or three policies total, then we sort of discuss those, I don't know. Would that work for you? Would that answer your concern, like, so you, with that?
Okay. Okay, question.
Hold on, Brian, were you gonna say something? Sorry.
All I was gonna say that I think has really helped us in Carlisle is the assistant to the superintendent keeps a table of, here's the current policy.
Yep.
Here's the clone.
Correct.
With the track changes, and here's just a summary of.
Yeah.
What we've done, and I don't know if you, if you're doing.
Just started doing the.
The red line.
Parson with the track changes, which is game-changing.
So helpful, yeah.
But just having that summary of, like, all we did was, you know, adopt the newest policy from DES, you know, the DESI or.
MASC.
MASC.
Yep.
Wrong acronyms, but, um, just keep all of us straight.
Yeah.
And did you talk to Alicia on policy yet?
We have not yet.
She is.
We want to include her, yeah.
She loves policy, and it, she said it is literally her specialty.
Yeah.
And she has ideas for how to, you know, get you through the book, 'cause she's like, you guys need some help.
So what if we, what if we, um, figure out a subcommittee?
Committee.
To meet this summer to do this work with Alicia, Dr. Hunter, and whoever can come, or whoever's on the subcommittee, and then could we give, task that subcommittee with coming up with a process for the committee to discuss and approve it all? Does that make sense?
Great.
So, just trying to figure out logistically how we get there, so, do you wanna add this to, 'cause if we create a subcommittee, we need to vote on it.
Yep, well, I, my recommendation, Alicia's like a young mom, not like a young mom, but not like, you know, retired Dorothy, who had a lot of time, I would get. You know what I mean? She's busy. So, my recommendation would be to get her availability, cross-reference it with who might wanna be on the subcommittee, and hopefully something will just magically work out.
Okay, so these three days are like the only days.
It's just really tricky.
Well, hopefully she's available.
If they can't help us, then maybe she didn't.
And if not, then you'll have to.
Yeah, or she could potentially, if we can vote on tonight, forming the subcommittee, that she could do a pre-meeting, if she can't do those days, and coach the committee, that would be great.
Why don't we throw it on the agenda for Friday?
Oh.
Oh, that's a good idea, and we could, that's a great idea.
If you have time to contact her.
We can talk to Alicia, okay.
You can figure out talks amongst yourselves, we really can only have three people on the subcommittee, or else we're gonna hit the quorum.
Or else we're a quorum, yeah.
So, talk about it, think about it, we can discuss it further on Friday, I don't want a long discussion, but then we can.
Does anyone have an interest in it, though? I know, so the, I mean, yeah.
No?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Of course, yes.
You, you like shook your head, I'm like, oh.
No, it's the other, you know, it's me, like, yeah.
And, and.
Policy, but I can say those dates are around for me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm available, I'm a policy junkie, you and I have talked about this, so I love it.
Yeah, I wanna do it.
So it could be the three of us.
There we go.
So just figure out, I would like to have her there at least a little Wednesday.
Sure, yeah, even if it's not the whole time.
And I could try to fit the ones we have questions about into those.
She's really great, and I, I think if you could get any access to her, and then, if it's a subcommittee and she's not even available those dates, you guys could meet on a different date, as you're a subcommittee.
Correct.
It's fine.
Yeah, we just, we put them in, there's, everyone reacted to them, they, you guys reacted to them, it's great, thank you.
Yeah.
But really, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is kind of the magic. There, and it's amazing how short the summer is.
Evenings, there's weekends, right?
I mean, I work for myself, I can make anything happen.
No, no, no. I'm just kidding. So, finish this up on Friday, one way or the other.
Good suggestion, thank you.
What dates do I hold them?
I think we still have the ones we have.
24th, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th from 9 to 12.
Got it.
Might be some small tweaks, but those are what we can shoot for.
Ish.
Ish.
10 to 2?
8 to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
How are you talking?
And you do it here?
Over here.
Right?
Yeah.
With the owl.
Mm-hmm.
Or some such.
Okay. So that is policy, are there, um, we, there's gonna be a number of, like, communications around the summer, like, I know we're gonna be, do, have to do the school committee evaluation, have conversations around goals for the, the coming year, but I feel like a lot of that we can do in writing over email, um, are there requests for, like, are there other things that we need to be thinking about for summer meetings, like business meetings or workshops?
I like a workshop.
We've never been able to do it in my tenure.
Let's make it, let's shoot for it.
I mean, we, we've had a weird situation, right? We had COVID, and then.
Yeah.
But it was like, I am.
We're out of here.
I'm taking the summer off.
Okay, so if that's the case, should we just, do people send us what their availability is for the summer? Like, what are your, like, X-out days?
Yeah, what are, like, I think the weeks that you are available, and then preferred times, midday, nighttime, whatever that might be.
We can't do it in the fall.
Well, what, so maybe I'll back up a second, just 'cause I might have a different idea of what a workshop is.
Did you have an idea about what the workshop might be?
I think we do our goals work there.
Oh, in a workshop?
Yes.
Oh, okay, in the summer versus in the fall?
Could that be August?
Dedicated meeting.
Dedicated meeting, so the MASC, it's so interesting, they, they've gotten rid of the word workshops, which is so bad, but, but it's just a dedicated meeting, that there's, that's all we talk about, we talk about nothing else, we don't vote on anything else, it would just be on goals and.
Can't take any votes in a workshop.
Can't take any votes in a workshop.
Which is good.
It is good, okay.
And it, yeah, and it just, it, 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 the reason they use the word workshop, or used to use the word workshop, is it provides guardrails, so that you cannot, like, a, a, you know, a member can't make a motion about something that is not, can't vote.
We did, we did a workshop last summer for Carlisle, doing exactly what you're talking about, I just didn't know what expectations people had with it, so just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
I mean, lots of school committees do full-fledged retreats, they go offsite with the staff and.
Crush policy manuals, sorry.
Like, even, like, I'm wondering, like, too, like, would you think a good idea for a workshop would be, like, just a little bit more to expand it, but, like, if we called it, like, a foundation workshop, where you did your goals, your norms, your protocols, kind of all in one meeting, and we'd call it our foundation workshop, and it would be like the kickoff to the year, like, that kind of a thing, I'm just.
Great recommendation.
My only request, because I feel like it worked better when I did my goals first.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, our goals all align, 'cause if you.
Yep.
I'm saying the obvious, if you go over here, and I've got this line here in strategic planning and initiatives and all this other stuff.
That's why I said the summer.
It just worked better when, I think I drafted mine first. They were drafts. They were open for discussion, but I think I did them first.
What was your ballpark timeline on that?
August 15th-ish.
Oh, no.
So then maybe the 20th. But maybe we just, could we dedicate the 20th?
I can do them early. I can do it. Let's do the 20th.
20th could be a workshop.
School starts.
Hundred percent.
Let's do the, yeah, let's plan on doing that.
So here's my question to you, Lori. Are you okay not having a business meeting until after the beginning of school? Like.
I think so. I'm going to put asterisks next to that. If we need a vote here somewhere along the line, we might need to ask for that. But I don't think, we've been trying to think ahead and bring you stuff now to avoid it. So.
Other question would be, knowing that it's still in August, on the 20th, could we do two meetings?
Yeah.
A hundred percent. Yeah, that's how you get out of it. You do a workshop from five to seven. And if there's business, you call.
Do it after work.
Business.
Let's do that.
Let's do that. So we could do the workshop from like five to seven, or if you think we need more time. I'm pointing at you because you brought up a good idea. So.
I really want to get out of this thing that we've been doing where we rush. We, we stop. We don't finish.
Agreed.
Because we need to get on to the next thing, right? Because that's.
So we can keep, like, that's what I mean. Maybe the goal is to keep the 20th pure and really focus on that.
Take a quick vote on something for a half hour and then preserve our other big thing, you know?
Sure.
Yeah. I like the 20th as like a foundation workshop.
Okay.
And maybe, and maybe you start it off, Lori, with you present your goals first or give us a draft as we.
Yeah, I'll certainly work on them over the summer. So you have.
And then also too, I remember one of the things that we all agreed to remember, so I'll just say it again, was that as we create our goals and talk about what we are requesting of the admin, one of the things that we thought would be a good thing for you guys to do is to jump in this time if you think we've missed anything. Or if, you know, something that you really think is important for us to prioritize that just for whatever reason didn't come up, didn't rise to the top of our list. So maybe even the, as we always seek to iterate and be better, you know, to your point, maybe the conversation should be more collaborative with you, Shelley, anybody, like your team involved in ours a little bit more.
Yep. Well, which is a good segue actually because do we, given that this is our last business meeting, I mean, I know we have Friday. But one of the things we would do prior to August 20th is collect a lot of information from you all in writing in advance, like about reports you want to see throughout the year and all of that. Do, like, that is, so that's what we did this year. How do people feel about that? And do we want to, I thought it was really helpful. I'd love to continue with it. But are there ways in which we could improve upon it, aside from coordinating better with the administration?
Go ahead.
You go.
Yeah, no, I think, once that comes in, if maybe we don't take it quite so literally.
Yeah.
But we consolidate, we summarize, because my folks were trying to literally go bullet by bullet to every request that came in. And I think it bogged us down a few times.
I also think too, we were, it was our first attempt. We were too ambitious.
We were.
So like, as a chair, as.
Yep.
To building on our experiences and, you know, successes and failures.
We tried a lot of new things. It was.
Yeah, we bit off too more, more than we could chew and scheduling. I think we ended up with nine report requests. I would, okay, well, it's some ungodly number. I would recommend if we were to continue with that, which I agree, I thought, what, so the things that, the thing that I took away most was I felt our discussions were more interesting participatory and deliberative and verbal rather than us sort of taking a passive posture. And to your point, you know, like sometimes I would find when, you know, several years ago, we would be listening to a report that took so long that then you're like,
Yeah.
I'm really interested in this, but it's also nine.
Yeah.
And I'm tired. So we wouldn't, we would, I thought several years ago, we would miss the discussion, which I think is what is the richest part of what we do and is like what can move the administration so that Lori has feedback from us. So that was a very verbose way of saying. I, I would recommend to at minimum, cut the number of report requests in half, which means someone's going to be disappointed because their report request isn't going to like make it. And that's okay. We were just trying to. So I think this committee is going to have to like prioritize when we get the dump of what, all the things people want to see. We just sort of passed it through. I don't think we should do that. I think we should. We need to do the tough work on prioritizing what are the three most important things or four that we want to see.
And I would make another suggestion and maybe give Lori the opportunity to come up with a report requ, like something that you want us to see. I, I do think, you know, if I reflect back on last year, the two best meetings I think we had is when we talked about reading and math. They were excellent. The teachers were here. Like, we got some really great information and it went, you know, it was pre-K to 22. It was great.
You know, it's all open. I think.
Yeah.
We missed a few reports to the end of this year, which we need to.
Too ambitious.
Right, or too ambitious. Well. But I think that if there's something that you say, wow, like you, we really need to talk about social studies next year, like you should put that into the chairs so they can, you know, figure out what the priorities are and we can talk about that. Because I think that was the piece that we were kind of missing was like.
With a list. I don't think we should start from zero.
No, no.
No.
I think you all should bring us a list.
No, yeah, so we'll send an email out. That's why I was asking now, like, do we, do we want to continue with that? Do people like that? So I think the answer is yes. And what we will do with what we get back is create buckets. So instead of just present, I mean, we will share all of them as written, but also just create some like, right? Like, I think, feel like we might.
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, coming in, I mean, I've watched retro school committee meetings. So I have gone back and watched them. Not the three hour policy ones, but I have watched some. I'm trying to learn here. I think I don't know what I don't know. My request, and this is the same thing I've said to Jim in, in Carlisle, is whoever is presenting whatever report, I worked at a Dutch company for 14 years, it needs to be concise. And so the expectation is of anyone that's going to come here, not just from a time standpoint of being tired. I want to be able to absorb it. I want the key points so that we can act on it in the best interest of the community. If it's long and drawn out, we're going to lose people. And I think it's, we need to pack some punch.
That comes with the request that when you put in your requests, would you keep that in mind? Because I think that was really challenging last year to meet all the questions.
Yes.
And do what she just described.
Yeah. Give me an executive summary.
Being asked.
Maybe, maybe a request is like having a briefing. Whoever is going to do it, if there's a pre-read, I love pre-reads personally.
So we did a lot of pre-reads.
And that's with the data.
Yeah, give me a one pager so I know and prepare. And that's worked really well. And then limit it. Because I think to your point, Alexa, we, we want to have a discussion and we want there to be a fruitful discussion. And to do that, we can't be powerpointed and reported.
Well, that's why we went to what you saw with the school improvement plans. No slides.
Yeah. I don't want a slide if it's, if it's visual and it's succinct. Great. Bring it. We'd love to see them. Yeah.
Yeah.
Less than 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll follow up on summer.
Wonderful work.
I think you're going to have to have a Concord meeting, just to do this capital planning stuff.
Okay. Well, we can.
Just to give people direction.
We can do a Zoom if we need one. I think Zooms are easier than.
I don't think it's going to be a super long discussion. It's just going to be, yeah, we agree with all these people about how we're going to do it going forward so that our staffs can move forward with their capital planning.
Okay. Well, let's see what happens at the staff level and we can always add that if we need to.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, great.
Lengthy calendar discussion.
No, it was good, important. So I think we all have a.
Really important.
A North Star where we're moving towards. So that's great. Do you want to move us to the?
Action items?
Action items. Point A.
We have language for the interim?
Hold on. No, you're just appointing Shelley Chin as interim assistant.
Correct.
So moved.
There you go.
Does that work?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, great. Second.
Oh.
There you go. Want to do a formal, the formal, Alexa?
Oh, no, I'm into it. Do we have a discussion? I thought, I'm so pleased that you found someone that's exciting and qualified and you are so enthusiastic. I can see that in your eyes and hear it in your voice. So that makes me feel very confident. I'm excited.
And I did sit on the interview committee and she was excellent. Like, I mean, I got a little bit more time with her and she really was fantastic. So I'm really looking forward to her starting. And her love for teaching and learning is definitely, it came through in her interviews. So.
That's great.
All right.
All right. Roll call vote. We'll do.
Anderson, I for both.
Hercheck, I for both.
Marano, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Viola, for the region. I for the region.
Waterson, I for the region.
All right.
All right.
Great.
You're going to skip the next one.
Yep.
On Friday.
Yep. We already.
So.
On the schedule.
I move to vote on the school committee meeting schedule as discussed and amended in this evening's discussion.
Second.
Wonderful.
And we roll call.
Discussion, uh, discussion, no discussion. I think we're good. Right? Roll call vote?
Oh, I have one discussion.
Uh-oh.
I really enjoy when Erin sends, I don't mean to make more work for Erin Higgins because I think she's spectacular and does too much already, but I love getting the meeting invitations.
Yeah, we're going to do that. We'll do that right away with the ones.
I do. I like that very much.
That's great. Thank you.
Anderson, I for both.
Hercheck.
Andrew?
Hercheck, I for both.
Marano, I for both.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Viola, I for the region.
Waterson, I for the region.
Great. All right.
So I'll make this motion and then we can, you can open it up for discussion. So Lori, you can offer the context.
Yeah, we'll turn that right over to Bob on the food service. Yeah.
So I would move to delegate the food service bid approval as written in the agenda.
Should we read the motion?
That could work.
I moved that the school committee delegate the awarding of any formal bids.
He's got a motion there.
That occurred during the summer of 2024 for food service to district administration and that administration ensure adherence, applicable procurement laws and regulations.[1664.22]